Please be good when you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning again, everybody. I call the meeting, special meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order Friday, October 14th, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. Myra, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Beach.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Golladay.
Here.
Commissioner Postello.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson. We have a quorum and you can continue.
Fine, thank you. Myra, was there any comment cards presented?
We actually don't have that item listed for the special meeting.
Okay, just want to make sure. Item number three, implementation of a 457F Executive Deferred Compensation Plan, Resolution Number 1228 and Resolution 1229. Diana Benz and Dave Tobin, you have some comments?
Yes, some brief comments. Thank you, Chair Simmons, and good morning, everyone. So before you, you have two resolutions for the implementation of the 457 Executive Deferred Compensation Plan that was presented back in your September 23rd Board of Commissioners meeting. The Resolution 1228 is actually for approval of the board policy and Resolution 1229 is approval of the actual deferred compensation plan itself. The briefing paper, the board policy, the full plan and executive summary and all of the administrative documents have remained the same, so there are no changes and they are attached in your package this morning. And what we're asking for is approval for these two resolutions so that we can move forward with the actual implementation of this 457F Executive Deferred Compensation Plan. Diana and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any questions for Dave or Diana on this proposal? Hearing none, do we have a motion to proceed with this project? We have a motion in a second. You need a roll call vote, Myra.
The voice vote sufficient?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you for your work on this. Next item on the agenda, St. Clair County Operating Agreement and Lease and Bond Agreement, Resolutions Number 1230. Tammy Fulbright and Mr. Roach, you have some comments for the Commissioners?
I do, thank you, Chairman. So we have before you the operating agreement and thank you very much for scheduling this this special meeting this morning. We very much value your time. But this is the culmination of a lot of very hard negotiations with St. Clair County Transit District. I'm very pleased to present these. They are within what be our normal operating budget. We have worked very hard, especially Chuck Stewart and Tammy Fulbright, at bringing this in. It is normal that that we would normally have passed the agreement in St. Clair County first and then and then to this board. But just in the interest of time, we're a little bit out of the box and we're going to pass this agreement today at ByState and then Mr. Sharkey and the board has committed to passing it at their board on Tuesday night. We're very excited to have this behind us and moving forward. St. Clair County Transit District continues to be a fine partner. This is a normal culmination of a lot of tough negotiations and figuring out what our business future is. And I would very be be very appreciative of a positive vote for this very important business partner. Tammy, is there any specifics that you want to bring up beyond that?
I don't have any other comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Tammy or for Mr. Roach on Resolution Number 1230? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept this and proceed.
Mr. Chair, I'll so moved.
Yeah. We have a motion, have a second. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And let the record reflect that I, Chair Simmons abstain from the vote, please. Okay, next item is an adjournment. If there's no further business, I would request a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Have a second. All in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you, we are ready.
Good morning, everyone. Like to welcome you all to the Operations Committee Meeting of the ByState Development Board, Friday, October 14th, 2022. At 8:36. Myra, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Golladay.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Postello.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
We have a quorum. Move on to item number three, the public comment. I know that we've received some public comment cards today. Myra, can you please give us the synopsis?
Yes, we received six public comment cards, all from Shannon Vila. Those include several different topics. Those topics include no response from multiple metro leadership persons, lift accommodate, excuse me, lift accommodations for missed trips, missed trips and separately loop writing, wellness checks to bus operators instead of to passengers who needed more, poor 70 grand operation continues, and proposal to present issues from observations to Metro and Board.
Thank you. All of these comments are available for review on the website, the ByState website in their full entirety. We care deeply about these comments. The board has also been has has these comments in their board book. I'm sure that some of these issues will be dealt with in the coming days. And I suspect that during our operations report, Mr. Stewart will have some ability to address some of the things that were brought up during the public comment period. So thank you very much for the public comments. Keep them coming and they are available for review on the ByState Board website. Fourth item is the approval of the minutes of the August 19th, 2022 Operations Committee Open Meeting. These minutes have been prepared for your review, for the committee review. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is the 2022 Annual Surplus Properties Holding and John Langa will be available for comments.
Thank you, good morning. This agenda item is for committee consideration, recommending approval for the full board's consideration of its annual excess properties list per board policy of properties no longer needed for transit purposes and which therefore may be disposed of. There are now 92 excess properties with last week's disposition of six plus largely wetland acres south of Bruntwood Bus Garage acquired by the city of Bruntwood for its park and watershed management project. The excess properties are listed in this briefing paper attachment and further summarized in your board book of excess properties. I would be pleased to answer any questions on this agenda item. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Does anyone have any questions for John or about the report? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve?
More moves.
Moved.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number, item number six, the contract modification and time extension East Riverfront Stair Replacement Project. Chris Paylor and Tom Current, you'll have some comments for us?
Thank you, good morning. This briefing paper seeks approval of a contract modification with Harland Company for work associated with the replacement of the stairs at the East Riverfront MetroLink Station. We've been under contract with Harland Company for a period of time and the project has incurred some delays. Some of them have been operational in nature and one has been related to a different site condition that Harland incurred costs that they incurred as they were getting prepared to construct the foundations for the stairs. Some geotechnical information suggested the need for a liquefaction study, so we asked them to perform that study. And then the liquefaction study recommended a change in the type of foundation that was constructed, so that had to be redesigned and the costs for the redesign as well as the cost for actually construction, constructing the foundation increased as well. So based on these delays, they're also seeking an increase in costs of steel that had to be fabricated for the stairs as well as some labor costs. As a slight silver lining to all of this delays, we were able to secure funding for a project that was going to lose planned to take place at this station in the not too distant future, which was the replacement of the tactile warning strips. So we have an ongoing program where we replace these strips at most of our older MetroLink stations as funding becomes available. So the funding is available for this. We'd like to incorporate this project into the Harland contract. The benefits of doing that are numerous. We've negotiated with them, believe the price that they're able to, will be able to agree to is fair and reasonable. We obviously won't have to go through the procurement effort and expense. And finally, the biggest benefit will be that they can do this work concurrently with the installation of the stairs. So we'll have to shut the platform down for a period of time to install the stairs. So while that's shut down, we can install these warning strips. Again, taking advantage of that shutdowns, otherwise we'd have to shut down the platform at two different times to install the stairs and the warning strip. So this will reduce the inconvenience of our customers being able to roll these two projects together. So the the totals that you see here from Harland for the requested increase in steel and type of foundations, those are their requests. We're still working through these issues with them. So these are the highest numbers that would be incorporated into a change order. I suspect the final number will be less than these numbers. We will request additional backup and we've been negotiating with them. So the amount that we're seeking in change orders not to exceed $500,000, but again, the total for all of these items, these five items right now is around 460 and I would expect that to be reduced. In addition, with the redesign of the foundation and then the new steel order, we're requesting extension of the contract out until May 1st of 2023. It's taking longer toward the steel these days. It's not uncommon. With many construction projects, a lot of materials are taking much longer than expected. Additionally, the replacement of the tactile warning strips needs to be done in warm weather. So once we come to terms with them on this change order, they will order them. It'll take some time to get to receive those as well. So we won't be able to install those here over the winter, so we would expect to have them install them as soon as the weather breaks in March. Any questions?
What was the original price plan for this project?
The original bid price was in the $700,000 range. Seven hundred fifty, I think.
Chris, how long will the stairs be out of commission?
They're estimating six to eight weeks.
And what will be done in the interim? Is there, is there another access available to the station?
Our current plan now, we've been working with St. Clair County is to shut down the station for the installation of the stairs entirely and put together bus, a bus essentially, essentially a bus bridge.
If that happens, I hope they can expedite the process because that is never good.
Yeah, we've been working with them to figure out how to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
More moves. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item is the contract modification for the microtransit project contract extension. And Jessica Gershman and Chuck Stewart?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Stewart, please feel free to jump in if you'd like, but I can give a quick overview of the request to the committee today. We present this paper for discussion and referral to the Board of Commissioners for approval. A request for authorization to modify our current contract with the Transportation Act to operate microtransit service implemented to explore the extent of service in complementing our fixed route transit. We've had this contract in place since the spring of 2020 with the board approved not to exceed amount of $5,866,886. It was a four base year and three option years. And we are now in our second option year. This was intended as a pilot to test out this alternative mobility as a complement to fixed route service, bus and rail. And we quickly found ourselves in the pandemic and with the workforce shortage and needing to use it as helping fill in gaps in service that we could not otherwise provide. And so due to expanded geographic footprint and service hours, we are making this request to expand the not to exceed amounts to complete this current contract year, which ends May 31st, 2023.
Jessica, can you go over the amounts, please?
Sure. So the amount that we're asking for an increase to the contract is 1,973,916. And this allows us to operate at the level we are currently providing service to our customers through the duration of the current contract. I should also add that we are preparing a competitive RFP to go back out to bid, so you will be hearing more from us about alternative mobility in the near future. Under Chuck's direction, we are exploring, you know, a new, basically making sure we are three years into this, this pilot and we are making sure we're putting it service in the right places, that we have the right scale and scope for what our customers' demands are. And so this is, this amount is to, again, get us through the current contract here because we have had to expand far greater than was originally anticipated in the original scope.
So buys us more service, but at a considerably higher cost?
It's the same level of service, yes, more service than we originally intended in when the project was designed in 2020.
Thank you. And how much of this is coming from the, from grant funding and how much from ByState internally?
The grant funds, the grant funds are over, that's a great question, two, two tranches of money from the 5310 program. And I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but one was in the ballpark of 700,000 for the first year and the second was 520,000. And so that makes up, you know, a little over a million dollars of the contract. So in total, you know, maybe a sixth of that. We were seeking out that 5310 money to provide this complement and explore services to that that target population, which is seniors and individuals with disabilities. So as you know, our fleet has six wheelchair equipped vehicles with lifts out of the fleet of 20 and in the the vehicle van fleet. So that's sort of above and beyond the original request because that was a priority for us. So that grant money is a compliment to the operations dollars.
Thank you, appreciate that information. Does anyone have any questions for Jessica? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is item number eight, the sole source, sole source contract award for light rail vehicle brake caliper overhaul. And I think this is Chuck Stewart and Tom Current?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Those requests is for a sole source contract award to Nor, to Nor Brake Company for light rail vehicle brake caliper overhaul services. As part of Metro's reliability centered maintenance programs, the brake calipers on our MetroLink light rail vehicles are overhauled approximately each 800,000 miles. And each light rail vehicle has six brake calipers, therefore power truck brake calipers and two center truck brake calipers. ByState originally issued a solicitation for brake caliper overhaul maintenance services in 2017. And at that time, only one bid was received and the contract was awarded to Canor Brake Company. Over the next four years, a total of 96 power truck and 48 center truck calipers require an overhaul on our system. Six LRVs are due for an overhaul within the next year, which includes 24 power truck and 12 center truck brake calipers. Canor Brake Company is the original equipment manufacturer of these brakes and they are being recommended for provision of these services. Use of Canor Brake Company will guarantee that the light rail vehicle safety certifications are maintained. Rail transit friction brake suppliers are very limited within the US market and other brake suppliers may not wish to assume the design and performance responsibility of a third party vendor. So management is recommending that the Operations Committee accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners approval of a sole source contract with Canor Brake Company for light rail vehicle brake caliper overhaul services for an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the next four years. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Tom, is that 400, $200,000 total or 200,000 per year?
It's over four years. Yeah, so that's the cumulative amount.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item number nine, the Second Amendment to Second Memorandum between ByState and the City of St. Louis. And I think our General Counsel Barb Ann King has comments on this.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm filling in for Mary Lamie on this agenda item. It is the Second Amendment to the Second Memorandum between ByState and the City of St. Louis. And it pertains to permitting for the riverboat, riverboats, the dock barge and the heliport site. The current amendment or agreement with the city expires December 31st of 2022. This new amendment would continue the current arrangement for five more years until December 31st, 2027. And the city has, is in agreement with this and this arrangement has been working very successfully now for more than a decade. So we just request that you recommend approval of this Second Amendment. Are there any questions?
I'd like to say I went down to the riverboat. I know a few of you did as well. I took a tour of our Collins and Senior Center. And I'm really glad that we decided to keep that because it was, it was really nice and I was, I'm real proud that, you know, to be any little part of that. And, you know, maybe it'll lead to other businesses coming down there, you know, so just wanted to say that. And that the operator, he was great and, you know, had stories about St. Louis and stuff. And I'd really like to see more marketing around that for folks, you know, that are visiting and stuff to come in town because it is kind of like a hidden little gym down there.
Very good. Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Chair, can I make a very brief comment?
Of course.
So I will tell you, I don't want to jinx this a little bit, but the very, very good weather and so on has meant that this is, this season is going very, very well as far as all of the operations on Riverfront. And, you know, we've had a couple of tough years before, not only with the pandemic, but with the flooding and the arch renovation. So I am hopeful that, and the, and the team is doing a really good job looking at, at innovative projects like the cruises, the Jazz Cruise and so on. And that has meant that some of the numbers have moved up very successful for people visiting St. Louis. And, you know, perhaps Commissioner, you're right, maybe a little bit more marketing in the region can, can bring a little bit more attention to those ventures. So I think that makes sense and I'll certainly pass on your comments. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, let's see. I think we're down to item number 10, which is unscheduled business. Talby, is there any unscheduled business?
Thankfully, we have no unscheduled business this morning.
And we'll move on to Operations Report from Chuck Stewart.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have in your packet both our Metro Service Performance Summary as well as our workforce update. As you can see from, from these documents, our, we are slowly but surely coming back. I was at an NAPDA conference this week and most of the properties reported that they are about 70% of the service that they were at prior to the pandemic. I think our numbers are kind of in that same line. As you know, in, in 2020, we experienced a 40% reduction in our boardings and we're slowly but surely we got back 6% last year. Right now, we're tracking at 4%. So we ought to be about in that 70% range too. But as you also know, we continue to have problems as relates to our staffing, our ability to attract and retain operators and you so graciously approved a attraction and retention policy at the last board meeting, which is going to, which is being implemented as we speak and we are moving toward trying to bring people on board and keep them here as we move forward. In addition, you also know that we have a service adjustment that is scheduled for November time period. This adjustment basically is to right fit our organization, get us back in sync. match the number of operators, the human resources that we have with, with the demand at this time and our ability to, to service that demand. So you'll see some changes coming up there. So although our numbers are not looking good at this point, we do have a number of programs, plans in place in order to facilitate matching our resources with our ability to perform service. It is much better in our opinion for a, a, a service customer to know that a train or a bus is going to show up, is wanting to show up on the hour. We may have more distance between the hours of showing up, but we are going to show up rather than have a no show. So that's what we're focused on moving forward, right service, right place, right time with the resources that we have. Is there anything specific about the reports on the workforce or the system performance? I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, Mr. Stewart. Deborah Moore. What, what's your baseline? What are you trying to get back to? Is it 2019, 2018? What do you consider your baseline now?
I'm not sure if we, I think our baseline is now. I don't know if we'll ever get back to where in 2019. It's a new system. It's a new day. Our ridership has changed. People are working from home. So what we're trying to find right now is what is our new, our new baseline, our new normal? We have example, an example, we have a budget for 789 bus drivers, operators. We're currently operating with less than 630. So to think that I can get back up to 789 in the near future, I don't, I don't think that's possible. So I'm trying to do right now is figure out what, what is the best I can do with those 630 that I have.
So you're creating a new baseline effectively?
Creating a new baseline. It's a new day. We need to figure out how, how services need to be provided in the future. And that's what we're focused on right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chuck, thanks so much for everything you and your, your team are doing. I did want to ask just a little bit about the right sizing. Is there going to be a more robust information packet provided before we? I know we talked about it at the last board meeting, but it's something that I think needs to be refreshed pretty often. And I don't know whether or not that's something the operations committee needs to look at before it goes to the board. But I would be, I would like to have a, an update about that before there's any final decisions made.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. We need to do that. Not only do we need to inform the board exactly about what's going on, but also the riding public. So as soon as we dot all the i's and cross the t's, we'll be starting a, a program to make sure that not only the board knows, but that our riding public is aware of what's going on, how it's going to happen and when.
Thank you.
Here, I have a, just a comment for Mr. Stewart.
Of course.
Chuck, I just want to piggyback on what the Chair, Windmiller said. I appreciate the hard work that you and Tammy especially done on the contract with Mr. Sharkey and his staff over in Sycro County. I know that there's been a long time coming and it took a lot of extra effort on everybody's part to get this to where we are. So I appreciate the, the work that you guys put in on it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you, Chuck and everyone for reports today. I think the last item in terms of information is to ask Talby if he has a president's report.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair Windmiller. Chuck, could I ask you in my president's report to comment a little bit on? I, I have had some specific comments and, and maybe you could comment today on the through train service, especially at Forest Park and where we are on that status. I will, both we have through trains that we will also be able to get through with this November service change. And so could you comment a little bit on that, Chuck? And talk also about how our flood recovery is going. So going in a little bit in reverse. So thank you.
All right. Very good. As Mr. Roach mentioned, we are, and I mentioned previously, we're changing this, this survey, serve, service plan going into November. As you know, right now, if you're riding our west, our blue line system, riding from Shrewsbury into Forest Park, you need to change trains and take a red line train to your destination from there. As of this November service change, that will be cleared up. You will be able to stay on that blue line train all the way to, to Fairview Heights or whatever your point east destination is. So that's one of the things that we're clearing up right now. We're still working in terms of, of getting our replacement parts, things that we need in order to put the system back to its original configuration. We are having delays in getting some of that, some of those things. I've heard at, at one point we were saying six months or so before that happens. It may be a little longer than that, but given the changes we are going to be able to make as we move into our service delivery plan in November, I think it would be a much improved situation for our riders, especially our riders of the blue line, which will give us better connections to the bus lines along the, the, the trail. So, so we're looking forward again in November to a significant improvement that will be noticed by our riders.
Thank you, Chuck. So just to comment a little bit, I have been personally pushing for this very, very hard. And I am a part of, so try to remember, although it seems very simple to run those blue line trains all the way through, those critical connection points so that when a train arrives, a lot of our customers will be transferring from a bus to train to bus, or even in the other direction, a train to bus. And that connection is very, very critical. A lot of people rely on that every single day, especially when the bus is only operating at say a 30 or 60 minute headway. If that train connection is missed, then we, we have created a 60 minute delay for a passenger. So there, this is literally a, a transit web and these changes, although it seems fairly simple to run those trains through even on that, that basis. There is the also added benefit of making the November service change so that we can run those blue line trains all the way through, which will improve service to those MetroLink customers, but also then when we can adjust the bus side of the house, so to speak. Then we've also maintained those connections. So I really appreciate your patience with that. I know my staff has been somewhat impatient with my demands, but we are trying to be sure that even despite the flood, trying to return to service as much as possible. In fact, some of the comments that were, the public comments were made are about those kinds of things. When we are short on, on bus operators, very much as we mentioned this morning, creating that new baseline. If we are running the illusion of the baseline at 789 operators, the truth is because we are so, so short on employment, as is the case, as Chuck mentioned nationally, there's many other properties in this situation. We are forced to miss trips. Those missed trips are damaging to our fundamental clientele and to the perception of our business. And what we're trying to do is find what that new baseline is so that we are absolutely 100% reliable. I just would point out that this system is, is integrated and whenever we push on one side, there's an effect on another. I would commend Chuck and his staff for looking very aggressively at these items. And I'm very excited that the trains will be running through in November despite the delays on the, on the signal house, which is in production at Awesome. And, and as much as that production is, is slow as molasses, and, and that's my term, we, we are going to continue to push and I really appreciate the service and not only the service and operations team, but the planning team that stayed up late at night oftentimes, looking at changing these systems so that they can accommodate this fundamental change in November. Commissioners, this is about not just this year, but the baseline that we can exist and have reasonable business in many years to come. Adjusting to that new reality of work from home, but also being able to create a transit system that attracts some new riders. If you're tasking me with trying to get back to those numbers of previous years, we have to get new riders into our system. And we have to have a system that accepts an employment level that we can achieve. And I think that Chuck's team has done a very good job at that. We're having this discussion every single day. This board has been very generous about moving that, those benefits and pay up. I, Chuck was in negotiations with IBW just yesterday. We're continuing to talk to 788. Our union partners do need those fundamental good benefits that this board has voted for. But we also need to know what that baseline is, is. I would totally agree with a, a good and more rigorous information packet about this November adjustment. I think that's absolutely right. And I, I will go into our marketing and communications team and talk about that more thoroughly and be sure that the, we're really getting the word out. And with that, I would conclude my, my comments on ops. Thank you.
Thanks, Talby. Are there any questions for Talby? Talby, actually I have a, a question and a comment. And if you said this and I missed it, forgive me. What is the timeline? And perhaps it's, it's Chuck Stewart who can answer this. What is the timeline for getting the Forest Park station repairs done? Please don't laugh.
So, so trains through November, so blue line return in, in November, literally at this service change. And then the awesome estimate, and I, I think you deserve to hear this in writing and, and I'm, I've asked for this memo to be prepared. But we are, it is looking at six to nine months currently. And I apologize for that delay, but that's, we are, we do have the signal house in production. I will note that one of the things that we are doing with that signal house is we are also putting it up on a, on a steel structure. One of the things that our federal partners asked us to do was make it more rigorous so that it's higher up should there be another flood event of that nature. But for 100% operations, we still are looking between six and nine months. I did ask Darren Curry to look at that number more thoroughly when we talked. And I'll be happy to respond more in writing once he's had those conversations with Awesome. Chuck, do you, do you feel that's an accurate assessment?
I think that's an accurate assessment. I was hesitant to answer the question because Talby doesn't like, let us say things like nine months. So it's.
Yeah, I, I don't like the answer.
I, I don't like that answer either. And I'm, I'm going to editorialize a little here. That is a critical station. I don't have to tell you that. But honestly, I'm getting a lot of complaints about, you know, the single tracking there. I appreciate that you've gone to single tracking instead of a, a bus link. But anything you can do to get that station online faster, you have got to do. I, it just, it's, it's, we cannot move forward with getting new riders when, when that station or any station, they're all critical, but particularly those, I mean, anything you can do to, to expedite that, I just, I'm going to strongly encourage you to do that.
Well, indeed. Thank you for that comment. So we will, we will talk specifically with Darren. Because one, some of the things that we can do is if we feel confident that we could come back to you, if we have a change order that might expedite it. And in fact, then it gives us the ability to do so. So Chuck, why don't you and I talk to Darren more specifically about that and we can continue to push. Because I were 100% that moving that timeline is a, is a critical factor for us as fundamentally as a business and as a region. So thank you, Chair Windmiller.
And the, the only other thing I wanted to say is I wasn't able to be at the metro, at the North Hanley Station opening. But apparently it was phenomenal. And, and I know that you worked with several community partners, including CMT. So I just wanted to, to tell you, I'm sorry I couldn't be there, but for other board members who were there that has received a phenomenal amount of positive press and it's really exciting. And I hope we can have more wins like that.
Agreed. The rain stayed away and we had quite an event.
Great. Anything, anything else before we move on to future meeting dates? Great. Myra, can we have the future meeting dates, please?
Yes, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, November 18th at 8:30. And that will be the last regularly scheduled meeting of the board for this year.
Thank you. A little bit of, of news, the only item for consideration in the executive session of, of operations committee would be the approval of the minutes of the August 19th, 2022, Operations Committee Executive Session Meeting, which has been provided to you. If there are no changes or corrections to those minutes, and if there's no discussion around those minutes, we can proceed to a vote here and not go into executive session. Does anyone have any changes that they want to discuss in executive session to the minutes? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the August 19th, 2022 Operations Committee Executive Session as presented as a closed record. And we need a roll call vote on this. If I get a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Have the roll call.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Piscillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Great. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just have one comment for you that I probably won't get to see her before her birthday this month. But Commissioner Galladay will be having her, probably her 40th birthday, I think.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Many happy returns.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to, to adjourn?
They'll move. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you all. Have a great weekend, although I think we have finance after this, so we might be moving right into another meeting.
Yep.
Ready to start AFA. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting of the Audit Finance Administration Committee meeting to order. Myra, please conduct roll.
Commissioner Beach.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Glad, Commissioner Gladney. Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pistello. Commissioner Windmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And you may proceed.
Thank you. Myra, are there any comment cards received for today's meeting?
No, there were no comment cards submitted for today's meeting.
Okay, we'll move forward to the, uh, August 19th Committee Minutes, which were provided to you. Are there any comments or questions or revisions to be made to those? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passed. Item five, sole source hardware and software maintenance. Tom Kern and Mr. Kinkade, I believe, are here to speak on that. Tom?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, this is our annual request for approval of sole source contracts for hardware and software maintenance. By State's investment in technology platforms for services such as dispatching and fare collection and employee timekeeping enhance our business and keep our operations running smoothly. By State has entered into software maintenance agreements that ensure necessary support is available when needed. These agreements provide for correction of errors or bugs discovered in the software, upgrades to improve performance, adaptive maintenance as our operational environment changes, and emergency support. Since 2013, the Operations Committee has been collectively approving these hardware and software maintenance agreements through a single vote. Most of our maintenance contracts are less than $100,000 and don't require Board of Commissioners' approval, but there are six contracts that exceed that amount and they are listed in your briefing paper. The sum of these six largest annual contracts is $2,126,000, which is an 18% decrease from fiscal year '22. Management is requesting that the Audit Finance and Administration Committee approve and forward to the Board of Commissioners this request for fiscal year 2023 funding of sole source contracts for hardware and software maintenance. These expenses are part of our annual operating budget and they're funded through local sales tax appropriations. Be happy to answer any questions you may have about them.
Any questions?
What was the reasoning for the, uh, decrease?
So the main reason is a change in Oracle support. We had a very expensive Oracle support, uh, that was provided by the company directly, and we changed that to Spinnaker Solutions with the board's, uh, blessing earlier this year, and that accounts for the decrease in the price.
Great. Any other questions or comments? We need a motion to approve this contract mod. Is your motion?
More moves. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Me opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Moving on to item six. Contract mod, uh, that's what I meant, contract mod for the talent management solution. Tom, you're also up, or Diana, but, Ben's?
Yes, thank you. This next request is a modification to By State's existing contract with Saba Halogen Software for our talent management system. In 2017, By State issued a solicitation for talent management system that would allow us to have a unit for model for human resources. The result of that competition was a contract award to Saba Halogen Software. We are now in option year two of that contract, which will expire on November 30th. Saba Halogen is the first talent management system that By State has ever implemented. The system is used to set and monitor goals and create development plans for staff, to track our job applicants through a program called Job Bite, to provide and track online training programs for professional development through the Open Sesame Program, to manage performance through one-on-one meetings, to perform all of our annual employee reviews, and finally to conduct annual merit increases. So prior to issuing another solicitation for a talent management system, we would like to explore other options and functionality that will meet our needs more effectively in the future. So that research is underway, but not yet completed, and therefore a contract extension with Saba Halogen is being requested. Management is requesting that the Audit Finance and Committee, Administration Committee accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners for approval, an extension of our existing contract with Saba Halogen Software to November 30th, 2023, with an additional cost of $185,544.44 to cover that extended timeframe. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments? Need a motion to approve then?
So moved.
Is there a second? There is. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Tom. We will now move on. I'm going to combine item seven, eight, and nine, uh, information only. Crystal Messner, uh, audit, follow-up summary, status report, first quarter, and the SSO status report, third quarter. Crystal.
Morning Commissioners. For agenda item number seven, our internal audit follow-up summary, um, we report out on these quarterly, and this is the first quarter of FY '23. I would actually like to kind of just notate on the pie chart. And the thing that I want to notate the most is that we have 55% closed. That is a very large number considering the amount of vacancies we've had. So I want to commend management, um, with working with audit to accomplish this, uh, high percentage of closure at a rate where we have significant vacancies. So I think that speaks a lot about the audit work and how things are going with getting corrections. For agenda item number eight, that's the internal audit status report for all of our audits for the first quarter of '23. We had four audits that field work concluded during this quarter. We also have another audit that is progressing as expected. And we also have, are in the planning stages and actually doing some work on a special project regarding the Metro Pass Unit. There are four subsections that we're going to look at. That's going to include the Metro Store, the Pass Unit, the U-Pass and Marketing, and also the Transit Cell Phone App. Also, internal audit has begun the requisition process for the Quality Audit Review. They also are called peer reviews of the Internal Audit Department. That's required under our standards to be conducted every five years. We are hoping to work with the Institute of Internal Auditors Quality Services Team and have tentatively scheduled that to begin in January of 2023. For agenda item number nine, our SSO, third quarter of calendar year '22 update. We were able to complete all of those activities as we had, um, proposed. We are continuing our efforts in collaboration with safety and management to monitor the progress monthly for all open SSO and SCADA caps, successfully closing two more caps in this quarter. I just want to add on to this as well. In the, um, last update, a few weeks ago, on October the 6th, the BSSO was very complimentary of this process between safety and internal audit. So I think we're making significant progress in that program overall for SSO internal audits from where we were at two years ago. Uh, we also are on schedule right now currently for our SSO field work interviews and our audit report, which we're expecting at the beginning of November. But there is a significant amount of excessively low staffing at BSD and all departments right now, um, so there could be some delays in supplemental documentation reviews. We're trying our best to, for the auditors to get out there and do a lot more, um, in trying to use documents more efficiently than usual, um, but we are, we may have some delays in that, but overall, I think we're on a really good course for SSO audits. So that concludes my report on this quarter's activities.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Crystal on those three items, seven, eight, and nine agenda items? If not, we'll move forward. Those, that was information only. Item 10, Treasury Report, Tammy Fulbright.
Good morning. At August 31st, our By State Directed Funds were $287 million with an average rate of return of 1.9%. And our By State Trustee Directed Funds were $71 million with an average rate of return of 1.7%. Um, we had some investment purchases for July and August. We purchased about $4 million with an average yield of 3.4%. So interest rates are definitely coming up, and that's good for us on this side. Um, for the fuel hedge, I'd like to mention, when I presented the June financials at the last meeting, we were still wrapping up year-end entries for the audit. And after truing up the fuel expense, the actual per gallon price for the month of June was higher than expected. Um, for the year, our average per gallon price remained under budget, but instead of $1.25 per gallon, it was $1.35 per gallon. But it was still under, um, budget at one for, at a budget of $1.74. But we do expect to see creases, increases in cost in FY 2023. So I'm asking to disregard the fuel hedge report in the packet, and we will, um, submit an updated one with our regular quarterly financials of September 30th. I just kind of wanted to give you an update on August, um, on the cash side too, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Tammy. We will move forward. Uh, item 11, the Quarterly Treasury Safety Keep-in Accounts Audit ending June 30th. Crystal?
Yes, uh, thank you, Commissioner. So for this, uh, quarterly accounts audit for June 30th of 2022, um, we did find that overall respective balances and credit ratings reported in the Treasurer's Report as of June 30th, 2022 are fairly present in. Uh, we attached a schedule of, of, you know, attached tables for you to look at supporting our findings. Um, as Tammy just mentioned, we had noted, um, that there were adjustments that were made to the accounting and fuel inventory records by the accounting department after the preparation of the Quarterly Treasuries Report. So we noted that, um, and that, you know, there's also a little bit more to that because there is a new process that was going through. So we just recommended that, um, they finance, uh, look at, with procurement, look at that fuel program and make sure that those, um, like what we would call true-ups are happening a little bit more often, so there's not a larger number that looks out of place at the end of the year. So thank you, Tammy, for commenting on that. That concludes my update.
Any comments or questions? Moving right along the procurement report, item 12, Tom?
Yes, this quarter's procurement, procurement report is included in your packet and has four components. The first is a non-competitive procurement trend for the first quarter of fiscal year 2023. Non-competitive procurements for the quarter totaled 14.95 million or 42.5% of the total purchase order volume of 35.2 million. Following a spike in total purchase orders at the end of fiscal year '22, you can see a much more normal spending level for the first quarter of fiscal year 2023, but the percentage of non-competitive contracts remains high, at least in the start, because of the single bid we received from the Safe Platform Plan Design. During the past 12 months, non-competitive procurements were about 25% of all procurement spending. The second component is a procurement card transaction report. There were no confirmed procedural violations during the first quarter of fiscal year 2023. During this quarter, there were 6,078 transactions made with procurement cards for a total cost of $1.58 million. The third report is a list of all contracts over $100,000 for the first quarter of fiscal year 2023. The largest of these contracts was our contract with HNTB for the Secure Platform Plan Design Services at 6.9 million. And the other very large contract was $3.9 million. That was with Cosne Wagner for the downtown tunnel repairs. The final component of the procurement report is a contract modifications report for the first quarter. You can see that the modifications involved exercising option years on existing contracts, five service additions to current projects, and some time extensions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this report.
Are there any questions for Tom? Thank you. Uh, Risk Management Insurance Program Update, item 13, Cassie Britton, you're up.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm here to provide an update on the fiscal year '23 Risk Management Insurance Program, which was effective 7/1. Risk management works with our insurance broker, which is Alliant Insurance Services, to secure the insurance to cover BSD and the enterprises. There's a summary of all of the insurances in your packet. The insurance market continues to be difficult, but there is some slight lightening up a little bit slightly. Um, most coverage lines, uh, we saw had a slight to a moderate increase in premium, about 8 to 15%. The two areas that I'd like to discuss briefly today are, um, cyber insurance and the Riverboats Marine Program. Cyber continues to be extremely difficult. Last year, we not only had a 125% increase in premium, but we also had to implement the multi-factor authentication just to get a quote last year. So, um, we were successful in doing that. This year, we were able to move some carriers around and keep our premium down. And so our overall increase on the cyber was 30%. We had budgeted 25% for that, but it still can, um, ransomware is still an issue and losses to the market is, uh, still extremely high. The marine coverages were also an, um, an issue or were difficult. Their overall increase was 31%, primarily due to market losses. The markets are having heavy losses. And then also the, the carriers have limited capacity, so they can't write as much. So, um, we also saw that. So the US L&amp;H, uh, coverage, which is similar to workers' compensation, we saw a 25% increase on that, but that was primarily due to payroll, because that is a payroll-based coverage. So those are the two that we had the most difficulty with. We did have some good news, so I'm happy to report that, um, our excess liability program, which we have seen increases for the last two years, over 100%. And in addition, last year, we had to increase our self-insured retention from $5 million to $10 million. So this year, uh, risk management met with several in, of our carriers, our incumbents, as well as potential insurance carriers. And we were successful in getting Munich Re to come on to our program, and they liked that primary layer. So not only were we able to get a decrease in premium, but we are also successful in reducing our self-insured retention back down to the $5 million. So the overall program premium for that is down, um, 10%, actually just under $423,000 less premium. Um, and our self-insured retention was reduced. Uh, a, a big plus on the excess liability. The total insurance for all coverages came in just $10,000 less than last year, um, and which was really about 19% below budget. So, um, that's my report. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on the insurance program.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions or comments? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Roach, any, any unscheduled business?
No, Chairman, we can move on to my report.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, I hope you see a, a continuing theme in a, in a company as wide, uh, and as large as ours. What is important is that we have themes that are parallel in different areas. You may have heard, for instance, uh, Crystal Messner's, uh, scheduling of the upcoming audits. Those upcoming audits need to also be in line with what are the other directives that we are working on. She noted, uh, audit functions having to do with our, with our app application and some of our fair media operations. And as you may know, we have also engaged with a new, um, consultant consult, Hyperion. Those meetings are ongoing, and that is parallel with the Secure Platform Project, so that when we roll that project out, we will have a new fair media program. But for instance, Crystal's audit can help us, um, come up with the fundamental data pieces that justify those expenditures. So what we need to be very careful about is that we are, uh, although we have different sections of the company, we are singing the same tune, so to speak. I would also notice, uh, note that you heard, um, Ms. Britton's, uh, discussion on the critical nature of cyber insurance. We will be having an executive session. We will be having an executive session, a very detailed, very valuable report on our penetration testing through, in, in an audit function that makes a lot of sense. So moving forward on what are our vulnerabilities as far as those are concerned, although it is sometimes hard news, it is important that we continue that focus. But also then you heard on needs for talent management systems and looking at, for instance, the pay rates. Those are parallel with, obviously, where you heard on another moment that we are short on staffing. Everyone is struggling through those things, and we asked you as a, as a board to authorize extra expenditures to look at our retainage rate. And the reason why I want to bring that up is that we, I am hoping to lead this company so that we are having parallel efforts at one BSD. We're trying to push these concepts, not waste your time and be sure that they all seem to make sense in a rhythm. So I just wanted to make that point this morning at Audit and Finance. I apologize for all the time we're taking, but these are very, very valuable minutes, and we hope they are well spent. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Any questions or comments for Toby? I want to mention that Tuesday afternoon, I spent about an hour and a half with Crystal Mesner. A very informative, beneficial meeting. Discussed a lot of things, including some of the items we're going to be discussing in executive session here shortly. So with that said, we do have a need to go into executive session. I need a motion that this committee go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential or privileged matters as permitted under By State Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080, D1, Legal, D3 Personnel, and our D10 Auditors. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Well, we have a motion as second. Roll call, please, Myra.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.